Good evening, I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of Monday, November 19, 2018. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Albertson?
Here.
Bueller? Danforth?
Here.
Lalum?
Here.
Manti, absent. Roby?
Here.
Solom?
Here.
Thorsten, absent. Vilhauer?
Here.
Wy?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to start this meeting off with a moment of silence for the city of Paradise, California, which is a city larger than Watertown, South Dakota, and it's been almost completely burned to the ground. There's still some houses and a few businesses, but virtually everything else is gone. And I just want to take a moment to be, think about them and be thankful that we're all safe and healthy here. Alright, thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight is approval of the consent agenda. And I would like to change the consent agenda to include items 15 through 18, which we've discussed during our committee meeting prior. And so this will become more of a routine for the council in the future, when we've had a discussion at our committee meeting, that we would just have the item at the council meeting on the consent agenda. So items 15 through 18 would be moved to the consent agenda. Right, and for anybody that wants to see the discussion on those items, the prior meeting, the committee meeting has been pre-recorded, has been recorded, and is available on our website, so you can watch it. Any objections to that? I'd look for a motion second to approve with that change. Motion by Lalum?
Second.
Second by Bueller. Is there any discussion?
I do have a question, mayor.
Yes.
On that, it has the alcohol beverage license renewals. Those businesses that are listed on there, do they have any violations? Do we know of?
No, I'll let Kristin answer that, though.
All of the ones in the consent agenda are up for their normal scheduled renewal. The ones that you'll see further on are the ones that were pulled because of violations.
If they have a violation, then they have to have a public hearing. And otherwise, if it's just renewal, they can be on the consent. Any other questions or comments?
This vote is just to alter the agenda?
Yes, the consent agenda.
Alright, just as long as I got the mic, I will be recusing myself some items 1C, 4, 5, 6, and 7.
Any other discussions? Alright, seeing none. I'll look for action. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda with those changes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries. And I don't need to approve everything, do I? Or is that... Because I amended the agenda, so... It's approved as amended.
Approved as amended, as the motion was made, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Item number two is public comment. And this is the time that we reserve for anyone who would like to make a public comment, to come and do so. If it's not on the agenda, otherwise, we can take your comment at the agenda time. Seeing none? Are you? You're just moving in your chair. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number three is approval of the agenda.
So moved with the change that you had previously discussed, mayor.
Alright, so items 15 through 18 are gone. I have a motion by Vilhauer, second by Danforth. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number four is retail on-sale liquor license renewal for SNL Entertainment LLC doing business as Sparky's Bar at 19 North Broadway for the period of January 1, 2019, to December 31, 2019. I'll look for a motion second for approval, and then I'll open the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Albertson, second by Lalum. Any discussion? Oh wait, open the public hearing? And now, is there...Kristin, you want to explain this?
Um, for items number four and five that you'll see, I do want to mention that these are not a new violation. They did have a violation, but you probably remember seeing them when they came to do their malt beverage as well. So four and five have to come back again because it's a whole separate license, but there was no new violation in between that time. So just so, I wanted to point that out.
Okay. Would you like to speak? If so, say your name. Microphone's not on.
Okay. Jeremy Seaman with Sparky's Bar. And yeah, as she said, it's from our violation back in March. And we came in and talked to you guys in May for malt beverage renewal, so...
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing then, unless someone else would like to speak. Did you have anything else you wanted to say? Okay, public hearing's closed. Any other discussion? Alright, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number five is retail on-sale liquor license renewal for BMG, Inc., doing business as Ringo's at 520 10th Street Northwest.
Mayor, on the prior action, I don't think there was actually a motion first.
Oh. Then I will back up. I'll look for... Okay, I got a motion by Bueller and a...
A motion to approve?
Okay. Hey, we are good. It goes so fast, it's just hard to keep track. We're good. Okay, item five. Retail on-sale liquor license renewal for BMG, Inc., doing business as Ringo's at 520 10th Street Northwest for the period of January 1, 2019, to December 31, 2019. Is there a motion and second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Lalum, second by Bueller. Okay, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak about this, to go ahead and come forward. Could you state your name into the microphone, please?
Brad Maynard, I own BMG Incorporated, Ringo's Casino. Same as Jeremy. This was an old violation from March. We haven't had any violations since.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Then I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, this is actually for us as a council. It would seem to me that in the case where these business owners have already come before us before, and they have not had additional violations, I don't think we should require them to come back to us again. We've already addressed the issue. Can we change our procedure for that?
I think it's...
State law.
State law.
For each license.
That they have to show up here?
Yeah, for each license. So next year, if they don't have another violation, they won't have to come back. But for each license, they have to come forward.
It's the same year, two different licenses.
I thought we had put that requirement in place, because they never used to have to be here.
For violation? I don't know.
I thought we put that requirement in.
I'll take our attorney's advice.
I can research it.
If my recollection is correct, we had, we put that requirement in. And if that is correct, we shouldn't make them come back twice. I think they've already addressed it publicly the first time, and as long as there's no additional violations, if they have to come back for a second.
But if they come to talk about a violation when they're applying for one license? If, I don't know, I'll let Matt research that.
Yeah, my point is this. They came back in March or April, whatever it was, and they came before this public body and explained what happened and what their corrective actions are. It seems odd for them to have to come back again, even though they're coming back for another license. This body's already heard what occurred and what their corrective actions are.
Absolutely, I see your point. But we have to comply with the law, whatever it is, so... We'll figure that out, for now. Any other discussion or comments? I'll look for action then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number six is retail on-sale liquor license renewal for Number One Casino, Inc., doing business as Number One Casino at 1,006 14th Street Southeast for the period of January 1, 2019, and December 31, 2019. I'll look for a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
By Lalum, second by Wy. And I will open the public hearing. Please state your name for the record.
Kevin Sollein.
Okay, go ahead.
Owner of Number One Casino. Unfortunately, this isn't an old violation. This is a new violation. I visited with the bartender. She had a friend in with her at closing time. The friend had a couple too many drinks and needed a ride home. She was going to sit, and for her giving her a ride home, she said she'd help her clean to get her out of there. She started cleaning, they started cleaning. An officer was called to the area of the parking lot, I believe. I don't know, I don't have the police report. I don't know, this is something that just happened within the last 30 days. The police officer came in the back door. He was investigating a disturbance in the parking lot. When he came in, he said, "Hey, do you guys see anything?" Da-da-da-da. Asked a few questions, I don't know exactly. But in the meantime, he'd seen a drink on the bar. It was after 2 o'clock. The bartender was cleaning, trying to get done to get her, to give her a ride home. She didn't throw the drink away. She was trying to be the good person, give her a ride home. The drink got left on the bar, the officer saw it, thus the citation. I guess, pretty cut and dry, short and simple. We can't let people in after 2 o'clock, and we can't be a good person, give people a ride home. Make them get a cab, make them wait outside, do whatever. Law is the law.
Kevin, that patron was over the age of 21, though.
Correct. I've owned the casino a long time, and I don't have a lot of, I don't know when my last violation was.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Councilman Lalum?
Kevin, did you talk to the bartender, just tell her that they're not allowed to have them?
She understands she made a mistake. This, at 2 o'clock, there cannot be an open beverage in the footprint.
Okay, as long as she's aware, we're good.
Anyone else? Alright, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven is application for a transfer of ownership of a retail on-off-sale malt beverage and video lottery license from Cloud Nine Golf Course, Inc., inactive, doing business as Cloud Nine Golf Course, Inc., number 2, 625 20th Avenue Southeast, to Dorothy Harms, doing business as Cloud Nine Golf Course, number 2, at 625 20th Avenue Southeast, Suite Number 1. I'll look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Wy. Second by Vilhauer. And I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak about this matter? Please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Kristin, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, mayor. The only thing with this is basically what it was doing is it's a transfer of an inactive, but it was a malt beverage that had the video lottery. So they're having additional video lottery at this. Kind of a tie-in, but that's what's necessary, if you want to have the video lottery.
Okay. Councilman Lalum?
So they already own the license, then they're just activating it essentially?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number eight is request by the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center for the city council to permit the consumption of alcohol at the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center on November 29 for a grit and sip event. I'll look for a motion and second for approval. By Lalum, second by Danforth. And I understand the city council must permit the consumption of alcohol in a public building, where we can, if it's a private building, there's no such council approval required. But because we own this building, the city council has to approve it. So Matt, do you have anything you want to add, or Kristin?
I don't, you stated it correctly.
Okay. Councilman Vilhauer?
Is this identical to what we did when the wellness center hosted the chamber after 4:00 earlier this year?
Yep, exactly.
Councilman Roby?
I forgot to add number eight earlier.
Do we have a quorum? Yeah, okay, we're good.
Well, unless you really want to vote, because technically this isn't the sale of alcohol, it's the consumption. But you can recuse yourself if you see fit.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number nine is replat of lots 6 through 9A, block 10, of CAC's First Edition Resolution Number 18-48. I'll look for a motion second for approval. Moved by Bueller. Second by Albertson. And I will ask Heath to please explain what this is to us.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is a re-subdivision plat of what was previously platted of lots 6 through 9. What the landowners wanting to do here is simply re-subdivide those four lots and create five lots out of them. And has done so accordingly to the plat in front of the council tonight, and has passed the recommendation from the planning commission as well. All the new lot sizes meet all the planning and zoning requirements for the minimum lot sizes and things of that nature for this zoning district. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, does anyone have any questions? Everything's all compliant with our ordinances, so it's pretty simple. The improvements are mostly in, but we'll address that, what's remaining in our next item. This is for approval of the plat. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, item 10 is authorization for the mayor to sign an addendum to the development agreement for the plat of CAC's First Edition. I'll look for a motion second for approval. Moved by Wy, and second by Albertson. Heath, want to explain this for us, please?
Yeah, so in conjunction with the previous action on that re-subdivision plat, planning staff visited the development agreement that was existing. It was actually expired for this particular subdivision. And with that, we needed to not only renew it, but also make an addendum to it and create a new deadline for the completion of the public improvements. As the mayor noted, most of the, a lot of the public improvements are installed, but they are not complete. And what the addendum does is establishes a new completion date of May 20, 2020, which is essentially two years out from this year for the completion of what's remaining out there. A couple of the major improvements that are remaining is some of the paving and construction of 36th Street West and Street to the south, I don't have that right in front of me, 19th. And then also some establishment of some rec-trail or bike trail grading that needs to be completed as well on the backside of these lots. And those are a couple of components, along with the rest of the original development agreement requirements that still remain. And we'd be glad to help answer any questions, anybody has on the development agreement.
I do have one. What was the original completion date?
Let me refer to Brandy on that, she's got a better chronological memory of the history on this particular project.
It was 2013, May 20 of 2013. They had five years originally, so then now it's been... And usually, we have a two-year standard for completion. So then, and then now it hasn't, we have these obligations that haven't been completed, and that's just been for five years now. So we'll reset the timeline so that we can get them completed by plating, doing this replat.
So you can subdivide, and then that just moves the date out?
No, this is more so to just get the completions, or the outstanding infrastructure improvements to get them completed.
These could, these are separate issues. The, there has to be a development agreement with a plat that doesn't have complete infrastructure. And this plat does not have complete infrastructure. So the development agreement must be concurrently recorded. And so you have to approve them both, basically, at the same time. And there's still some outstanding things, like Heath said, there's some grading of the trail and the pavement of the road. And those were supposed to have been done by 2013, so technically, they can't plat with outstanding requirements unless you would modify this. And maybe we should have taken the development agreement first, but since the plat was approved. Councilman Danforth?
This is, probably in the last four or five months, this would be the second time that I personally have been made aware that we've got these longstanding obligations that just aren't being met. We finalized one a couple meetings ago. How many more of these things exist out there? And why are we not upholding these requirements for timeliness upon these developers?
It's because the, it's expensive to do development, and to require developers to honor their promises is expensive to them, and they request that we don't, and we could. We could come down on them. And, you know, we're trying to at least keep track of them and make the council aware when the dates have passed and there are still outstanding requirements. So it's really difficult to track these things. Our ordinance says they have to do the things before they can plat or promise to do the things. And everybody promises. And we give them a timeline, and they often don't meet it. And it's, you know, they come across hard times or whatever. They always think they're going to be able to, but money's tight, and we don't want to try and, you know, force them to do stuff that they can't afford. So that's going to come before the council as we refresh our development ordinance. This is part of our development ordinance. And it's a valid question. It's...
It seems like we're opening up a door to inconsistent conformance or requirements to our people.
We're trying to close that door.
Right, right.
That door's been open.
Yeah, I know, I'm saying historically.
Right.
And that's a huge concern, and I never wanted to get them done, because it's an obligation that they have committed to. But, you know, I would prefer, honestly, if it's 2013, I'd prefer that as a councilperson, when something's not being met, to know about it in 2013, not 2018.
Right.
Right.
Because then we can have discussions to see what we think should be done, and...
Couldn't agree with you more, Mike.
Yeah, and I know our system, I talk about our systems, our electronic capability to manage these things is lacking, and I know we're going to be working on that, but...
It's getting better.
Yeah, it's, that's a concern, is that, I'm just afraid that we're gonna, that we are at times being more stringent on some, not others, we're...
We haven't called anybody to the table, ever. And really, up until, I mean, we've just really just started, so... But we're looking at all of them.
And then, yeah, we're just addressing them as a case-by-case situation, where when, like this, with them wanting to replat, then we look at what their obligations were, and what's still out there, and their preliminary plans, everything, so... And then, but going forward, we are trying, we're holding true to our process, and then coming up with a better way of tracking everything, and doing certificates of completion, and having the warranty date and everything for all of these subdivisions.
Alright, those are valid questions. Any other questions or comments about this? Alright, then I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 11 is second reading of ordinance 18-23 amending sections 5.0216 and 5.0217 of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown regarding elevation references. I'll look for a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Lalum, second by Bueller. And I will open the public hearing and ask Heath to explain this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the second reading of this ordinance amendment, where we, what we're trying to do is change some language to make it more consistent with how FEMA regulations read and how we otherwise administer some of our floodplain sections of our ordinance. And the biggest change here, what we're looking at doing is in how our ordinance currently references how new construction and substantial improvements have to be set as far as an elevation goes. And it currently reads that that new construction or substantial improvement must have the elevation of the top of foundation on which a flooring system rests has to be at or above, a foot above, the base flood elevation. And we're trying to take the top of foundation reference out of the current ordinance and use the standardized language from FEMA of the lowest floor of the structure. So rather than referencing the top of foundation on which the flooring system rests, we're going to simply reference the lowest floor elevation. And then that will add some clarity in how we administer this and consistency with the FEMA terminology. And it does have an impact in that the lowest flooring system that's referenced will end up being beneath a foot or above the base flood elevation, but the top floor elevation will not. It will be at or above a foot above the base flood elevation. I don't know if that makes sense, it's kind of hard to explain without a diagram, but it is consistent with FEMA terminology and how they would apply the regulations. We do still get credit for our scoring system by having us set this elevation a foot or more above the base flood elevation. None of that is changing. We've confirmed with FEMA that our, as far as our regulations and how our score is calculated for flood insurance rate throughout the community, those will not be adversely affected by this amendment, and...
We also checked with ISO, who gives us our community rating system rating. And FEMA doesn't give us that rating, but FEMA tells us if our ordinance is compliant. This doesn't affect the compliance of our ordinance. Also does not affect our CRS rating. And that's really important, because we don't want to reduce our rating. It clarifies the language and makes it uniform. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Does the council have questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 12 is ordinance 18-24 amending section 18.0101 regarding parking restrictions. I'll look for, oh, motion and second for approval. Moved by Roby. Second by Albertson. Okay, Matt, will you please explain this to us?
Yes, thanks, mayor. This was a change that was brought to me by the police department. They had requested that we provide this additional language in our ordinance that makes it clear that these parking ordinances, where they apply to vehicles, also apply to trailers and basically any type of vehicle, making it more broad language, so there's no question about whether something's a vehicle or not. It also removes from the no parking, or the vehicles that can't be parked on the street, period. It removes from that list vehicles over one ton because of the question about whether a vehicle weighs over one ton was becoming difficult for the police to know whether or not, you know, something fell into that category. So vehicles over one ton would still be required to be moved every 24 hours. They just no longer would fall under that list that does not allow them to be parked, period, on the street.
Should clarify it for those who have to enforce it. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item 13 is the first reading of ordinance 18 dash 25, amending zoning district boundaries by rezoning lots one through three, block three of Watertown Development Company addition to I-1 light industrial district. And I believe this received the recommendation of the plan commission, is that correct, Heath?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's correct, received the recommendation.
And I'll let, this is just a first reading, there's no action required, but I would like Heath to explain what it is.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. This is an application for a rezone for this particular area, uh, lots one through three on the east side of 19th Street Southwest in the Watertown Development Company addition. The rezone would be from the current I-2 zoning to an I-1, uh, zoning designation for these lots. Uh, just a couple of notes that, uh, if this were to be approved, these lots would be contiguous to the adjacent I-1 zoning to the east. And the lots west of 19th Street Southwest would remain the current I-2 zoning designation that they are right now.
Okay, so I-2 is a, um, a zone which is reserved for, um, dirty, loud, um, offensive activities. It's, it's the heavy industrial district. And changing it to I-1, um, reduces the number of things that can go on in there. But there are some other changes that are inherent in the zone. So there, there's a specific reason that they're wanting to do this, but this is, should be looked at, um, just in general. It, it makes the available land for I-2 uses, um, less or fewer in our community. Any questions?
If, if I could, uh, expand on that point, that was discussed at the planning commission level as well, that, um, knowing that Watertown has limited I-2 availability, there are planned through the comprehensive plan, planned areas on the outskirts of town that would be applicable for I-2 uses. It's also noteworthy that these lots that are being rezoned do not meet several of the I-2 district requirements. Several of the components like, uh, minimum lot area, minimum lot width, front yard setbacks, things of that nature are not currently met by these lots because of the small size and the nature of them and, and how they're configured with their current structures. Uh, a lot of those non-conformes would be brought into conformance with the rezone to the I-1 district. And there's actually two different charts in the request for council action that indicates some of those non-conformes that would be brought into conformance by going from an I-2 to an I-1. I just thought I'd point out those few facts as well.
That's a good point. So, um, they wouldn't all be fully compliant afterward, but more of them would be compliant than exist today. So that's a good point. Councilman Villar?
Mayor, I know it's only a first reading, but I know we've got a couple of petitioners here. Did you guys want to speak? Would, would you invite them to speak?
Sure, if, if you have something you'd like to tell the council, I allow it. Please state your name for the record.
Rex Skirber, current owner of Eastside Investments that owns one of the properties there.
Is that microphone on?
Rex Skirber.
Thank you.
One of the current owners of Eastside Investments that owns one of the properties in question here. Uh, our main purpose, I guess, for rezoning is like they had mentioned, to get it more compliant for future uses anyway, far as possibly selling the land in future or new renters or tenants that could go into the property. Uh, the one lot, I believe it is number two, that still wouldn't be compliant. There is actually a contract signed with the owner of that property. When the property comes for sale, that will actually be joined with lot number one and replatted into one large lot there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
How many of these lots have no, no buildings on them now?
Don't know the answer. Heath, do you know?
I believe they all, but maybe one, or do they all have buildings?
Currently, all four of them have buildings on them.
Okay, so what we're dealing with, with, we're, we're not creating non-conformal, conforming lots with no structures on them. We're going from I-2 to I-1 and the numbers that are reflected in here re- rep- represent what the buildings are now.
Right, and the lots. There, I mean, you can see there's lot areas. The required area for an I-1 lot is significantly less. It's 30,000 square feet as opposed to 220,000 square feet for I-2. So many of the lots are non-conforming in an I-2 and some of them become conforming by this action. Some of the lots, and then the buildings on them possibly some-
Yeah, there are two components here, Councilman Danforth, that, that, that this rezone would affect. One is the, the land by itself without a structure on it as far as meeting those minimum lot sizes. And then the other one is some of the setback requirements for these lots with existing structures. And that's the chart that Brandy had put together on, uh, identifying what is brought from being non-conforming into being conforming. Some of those measures were not brought into conformance still with this rezone, but a lot of them were.
So none of the lots becomes completely compliant. They're all for still non-conforming by at least one measure. But it's better than it was. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 14 is first reading of ordinance number 18 dash 27, revising and amending section 5.0301 to adopt with modifications the 2018 additions of the International Residential Code, International Building Code, International Property Maintenance Code, International Mechanical Code, and International Existing Building Code. So I'll look for a motion, second for approval. Oh, sorry, it's a first reading, never, I take it back. But, um, I know that our building official is here to answer questions about this. And, um, essentially, Ken, could you please come up just in case? I think that, um, as you, you probably all know, we have adopted building codes, um, by ordinance. And we have ratings, just like the fire department has ratings by ISO. The floodplain ordinance is ISO rated. Our building code adoptions are rated. And, um, we will drop significantly in our rating if we don't adopt this, um, new code very soon. So, um, we don't want to affect anybody's insurance rates and it's quite complicated, but I'll let Ken summarize.
It's, it's, the ISO is just basically pushed up our timeline. We adopt the codes, we've had the 98 code, the 03 code, the 12 code, and now we're adopting the 18 code. They, actually the ICC comes out with a new code every three years, so we didn't adopt the 15. We didn't adopt, uh, the eight in there either. But, uh, but then, we just recently went through our ISO investigation report and then if we don't adopt the 18 codes quickly, then, uh, our rating will go automatically down to a nine. We're currently a five and we're hoping to maintain or improve that rating by adoption of the code. Otherwise, the basic code is pretty much in general what we've done over the years. We've made a few, I met with the home builders locally. Uh, we've made a few minor concessions, but it's typically just renumbering and redoing from what we've done in the past. But if there's any individual questions, I'd be happy to answer anybody.
Okay, Councilman Lalum?
Ken, when does, when does the code come out as, what time of year?
Actually, this one went into force of August of last year.
Okay, how come we're behind so far? Is this that long to get through it or?
Actually, I, well, we had gotten books and I had to rush books just to get this, to get it done. I mean, it was hard to even get the material to do the code reduction, I mean-
A year later?
I've ordered two sets of books because the one was coming so slow and then, then I tried to get a digital copy. I tried to get in a soft cover copy, I tried to get a hardcover copy just to go through and revise it. They adopted, and like I said, they're actually working on the next code adoption, but it, it takes a while for it to go through the system, so.
Thank you.
Typically, we would adopt this in January, February of the, of the following year anyway.
Councilman Danforth?
Do, do we ever have any exclusions from here that we keep out of our adoption? In other words, you got these requirements now?
Yep.
Do we ever not adopt some of the requirements?
Oh, absolutely. No, yeah, no, no. I mean, just like the seating in the arena from two, from the last adoption, we changed the requirement from 70 down to like 50. We kept that in there again. We don't adopt the energy code whatsoever. Almost nobody in the state of South Dakota adopts the energy code. We lessen the requirement for when you have to put foot, uh, footing under a deck to, if it's got to be greater than 30 inches above the ground. Greater than thirty, you're greater than 30 inches. We don't adopt where you have to cheat rock the basement of an unfinished basement until such time is done, so. And a lot of our stuff is regional stuff, so I mean, uh, egress window in a basement is supposed to be 44 inches off the floor. We may have moved it to 48 inches because we have a 48 inch frost depth. Uh, the requirements for a frost, for a full footing might be at 600 square feet. Where we revised it to 1,300 square feet because that's what's uniform with the rest of the people in the state. Just minor stuff like that. I'd be happy to go over every single issue if you want, but-
Well, my only concern, and you hit on it, is, is in certain cases, we are adding cost to our local community members that may not be justified. And that, that concerns me when we-
More often than not, we've reduced cost to them. So.
Councilman Bu- Bueller?
Kenny, can you, what are the, can you just touch on a few of the bigger things, the major changes that you see to this?
Well, let's see. Well, one of the bigger things in overall would be like the adoption of the energy code that we don't adopt, but almost nobody within the state adopts it. It would be like also what I said for the non-re requirement of, uh, cheat rocking non-finished basement area. It'd probably be one of the bigger ones. We don't require some of the duct testing and some of the other testing of your heating and ventilation systems again because we didn't adopt the energy code. And again, I don't know that anybody in the state has actually adopted the energy code. We're in the Northern Territory and people know enough to put insulation in homes that need it, so. The size of, uh, requiring a foundation, not the foundation, like I said, that we changed 600 square feet and 400 square feet to 1,300 square feet. So you can do a slab on grade on a much larger accessory structure, not a, not a residential or habitable structure, but an accessory structure without having to put in a full footing, which is a great savings to some of our people. The frostproofing of a, of a roof edge, um, you have that, uh, energy, the seal, uh, I can't even think of the proper word, that they have to put down when they reshingle, you know? In the old days, those roofs all used to be flat to the roof all the time and there was a real heat loss there. So that's why it was a big thing to get that, uh, seal on there that's three foot wide. Well, instead of requiring to be two foot inside the interior wall, we only require it to be three foot off the eve. That saves them about half of what they have to do there. But again, everything built anymore has an energy heel in it that's eight to 10 inches. So it's insulated all the way down, so you don't have the heat loss, you don't have the icing problem like you used to have in the old days. Under the IBC, they now have taken the existing building structures out of the code altogether. So we're adopting a whole new book, which is the I E B C, which is the International Existing Building Code. That doesn't apply to residential, just applies to business. Yeah, that's probably most of the bigger stuff.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ken.
You bet, thank you.
Right, item number 19 is old business. Is there any old business?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment on one thing from earlier. I did look, uh, do the research real quick, um, that the hearings are required for each individual license. That's a state law. That, what you're thinking of that the council did that was not required by law was probably the background checks.
No, what we did, the hearings are required, the requirement for them to be here is what I'm referring to.
Oh.
Right, I know the hearing's required, but it used to be we never had a requirement for them to be here. So we never knew anything about the violation.
Physically, physically be here, you mean?
Physically be here.
Oh, I see.
And my point is, if we've already addressed it with them, that's our requirement, not a state requirement.
That's correct.
If we've already asked them to be here and they have been here, let's not ask them to come back again. We already know what the answer is, we've, we've already addressed it.
They may want to be here because if the public can come and talk, say something against them, they may want to show up.
Well, that's what the hearing's for.
That's what I'm saying.
That's up to them.
Right, right, right.
And I'm saying as far as requirement to come back and rehash something we did four months ago or five months ago, seems odd to me that we do that, just-
But the hearing is required though, right, okay.
Thanks, Matt. All right. Any other old business?
Just to report that the library, the heating systems at Redlinger's, I think they're finished now. I haven't checked with DeeDee recently, but that was supposed to have been the week that we had our library meeting. They were supposed to be finished, so I think they're going to make it before the cruel winter hits anyway.
Good.
So they're very pleased with it.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, it's chilly right now. Thank you. I do have a few items of new business. One is, um, a new certification that Heath Von I and I have both achieved. Uh, the council president just passed me a note to talk about it. I'm going to toot my horn a little bit. I attend the Public Works Exposition Conference every year. Um, I've had a career in public works and this year at the conference, they were, um, talking about a new certification for public works officials that American Public Works Association, um, is wanting people to take advantage of. It's a, um, you go through certain requirements, you have to have worked for a certain number of years, um, completed a certain level of education and training and, um, take a test and, uh, all this sort of stuff. And they were giving a free testing period, uh, for one month. And so they waived the $500 fee to take the test. So Heath and I both took the test and applied for the certification and we passed. And we are both now certified public works professionals in management. And I didn't realize this, but, um, APWA has thousands and thousands of members and Heath and I were among the first 23 humans to get this certification. So, um, I'm sure there will be many more in the future. They just started it essentially. So, so that's good. And that should assure people that, um, your public facilities are in the hands of people who are experienced and trained and have passed the straight face test by the association. Okay, another item is, um, that the, we will be having a special city council meeting on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, November 27th at 7:00 PM to give a tax presentation. And this is something that I've worked on with the finance officer and Councilman Roby. But Councilman Roby and Kristen Bobzine have, um, put a lot of time into, um, getting this ready. And it's an informational presentation just to let people know, um, how we generate tax revenue, what our uses of that tax revenue are, what our limitations are, and what the trends have been. So, um, I would encourage anyone that has any interest at all to come to that meeting and just see how it goes. And there will be a question, period, um, and also if anyone has any questions. We will be recording it like we record all of our city council meetings. And anyone can access those recordings on the city's website, which is www.watertownsd.us. And, um, we have a special place on there to view, to watch meetings that are recorded. And you can watch them at any time. They might be played on GovTV, but then you kind of got to watch the schedule. Uh, if you go to our website and, um, it's being shown here, you just click on the videos or the council meetings and choose your council meeting. So it will be under the, um, will it be under special meetings?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, so it's a special meeting, it's not a regularly scheduled city council meeting, but a, a special meeting. So, did you want to add to that, Don?
Just add that there, we don't plan on any action being taken.
Right.
We've got this bill as a council mem- or council meeting, there could, there may be a quorum there, uh, but we don't anticipate any action. Just education for the public.
Thank you. Kristen, you want to add anything? Hey, so, we expect a packed house. 7:00 PM. Okay, and then one more, um, item of new business that I wanted to bring up is, um, I will be, I'm considering, and I take input on this, issuing a- considering, and I take input on this, issuing a request for proposals for naming rights and sponsorship consultation for our new gun range. So I'm going to advertise that, and we've hired Ryan Query in the past to do that for us for some of our other city facilities, and he may give us a proposal, and I do expect that I'll get a couple, a couple of other proposals to do that work for us. If the council has any input on that, please feel free to give it to me, or if you have any questions now, if you want to talk about it. Okay? And is there any other new business? Councilman Lalum?
Mayor, do you want to just touch about the uptown SDSU kids that came this past week?
Yes, and we, we have an arrangement with SDSU Department of Architecture, which is pretty much one-sided. We mostly receive, they mostly give, but they have used our downtown Watertown as the subject of one of the third-year architecture students' classes. They're studying our downtown and imagining how we could improve it to make it a place where people want to gather. The students came to Watertown three different times and made presentations twice, and this past week, they made a presentation of a video game that they've created, and they've actually sent that to me, and I need to forward it to our IT, but I'm hoping to put that on our website so that people can see. It's really cool. I don't know how they do it, but they, you get to be like a little robot, or hover on a disc above the ground, or drive a car, you choose, and you can drive downtown, and you can see what the students have imagined on several of the different locations as changes that they think, in their opinion, would improve the look of our community. And I just want to say, these students, and there are 14 of them, each student did at least 24 different proposed changes, and they only selected two each. So they did a lot of work on our downtown, and there was a pretty good turnout at the presentation last week, but they are, they've worked very hard on this, and they are making their final pitch to a panel of architects down in Brookings at SDSU. And I should have had that date and time in front of me, but I believe it's December 4th for their final grade, and I'll send, and maybe I'll do a news release about that so the public can find out. And they would like for the public to go and watch their presentation down at SDSU. This was their final presentation that they made to us, but this is a very beneficial relationship that the city of Watertown has with SDSU, and I hope to continue it. Professor Fong Zou is the one that, he reached out to me and asked if the students could study our downtown. At perfect timing, at a time when we're actually trying to imagine what we could do downtown to improve it as a place where people want to gather. So it's a good relationship for us, and I'm looking forward to more interactions with the students in the future. Thanks, Adam. Anything else? No other new business? Okay, are there any other liaison reports? I think we got one already. Councilman Roby?
Just, I was at a CVB meeting today, just reminder that the holiday parade is Friday, 5:30. Is this, I was 6:30, glad, I'm glad I asked.
6:30.
6:30, I think it was. Okay, well, 6:30 is the holiday parade. All right. Friday. No, thank you.
Yeah, there will be areas of the Kemp Avenue which will be blocked off for no parking, and that's a change from previous years. Last year, there were lots of concerns about the safety of doing that, it's dark out and it's kind of slippery sometimes, and so we think that'll be safer. And hopefully, people will be mindful of those who are sitting. If people have come and brought chairs to sit, some people cannot stand to watch the parade the whole time, please be respectful of that, don't block others' view, and don't park where we're asking you not to park. Anything else? Any other liaison reports? All right, we actually do have a need to go into executive session tonight in order to discuss and consult with legal counsel on contractual matters, so I will look for a motion and second to go into executive session. Moved by Lalum, second by Y. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. And we, Kristin, we do not expect action. Right? No action afterwards.